All right, you guys are all set and recording.
I would like to open the meeting and it is 7:04 PM. And if everybody would just please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Um, so attendance this evening Karen, uh, Mrs. Pollard is excused. Mr. Digits is also excused. Mr. Woods just called me, he is also excused. And my brother's absent and so with that being said, I'm going to, uh, move on to reorganization. So at this time, every year we have to reorganize the board. And that of course is, uh, position of chair, vice chair, a financial officer also with that. So at this time I am going to step aside and, uh, Dave, you're the longest serving member, so I'm just gonna have you, um, just throw it out there. The nominee for who wants to be the chair.
Do I have anybody in the committee who would like to be the chair this time around?
I'd, I'd be willing to give it a shot.
Okay, anybody else?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so.
Tom, you want, Tom, you want the job, because I'll, I'll help you, teach you what I know, so.
Okay.
I'll give it a shot.
So basically, is all in favor? Say aye.
It's, uh, Dave, do it individually, do it individually.
Okay, so can we start off with, uh? Okay, if we go around the votes, uh, let's go with, uh, Dave, Dave Erickson, correct? Sorry, I didn't name correctly.
Yes, Eckerson, aye.
Okay, Nick Voss?
Aye.
Uh, then myself, which is Dave Marvell, I say aye. Are we missing anyone? Oh, Karen.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're missing me, you're missing me. I, I get the vote.
Tim?
Aye.
So it's unanimous, so, uh, Mr. Bork, you're gonna be our new chair.
All right.
All right, Tom, the ball's in your court now, you're gonna, um, nominate some, or take, open nomination to the assembly for vice chairman.
Okay, uh.
I, okay, I, I'm, I'll take one of the positions, but I'm willing to go for a financial officer, but I don't want to get in the way of somebody else.
Be out of order, but yeah.
Excuse me.
Well, go ahead, I mean, we have to nominate somebody for vice chair and then we know you're interested for the other job, right?
Well, I'm I have no preconceived ideas, I'm just.
No.
Throwing it out there.
Does anybody want to nominate anyone for vice chair?
I'd like to, uh, I'll nominate myself to be the vice chair.
Okay, so that would be a good a good mentoring position. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Oh, somebody beat me to it.
Okay, so now we want to go on each individual, so you can record the vote, Tim, correct?
Correct.
So let's go through the, uh, roll call, uh, the present, the members that are present. Um, let's see, I have to step down, right? Because I'm the chair?
No, you're the chair, you continue.
I can still.
Yes, you continue, you ask the people for the vote.
Can I vote?
You call the vote.
Can I vote?
Yes.
All right, so I'll vote in favor of, uh, Tim as the vice chair, Tim Reins.
All right, so you're the, so, well, let's get this straight now, because you want to get this for the record, are you? I am willing to accept, there was a nominee, I nominated myself, I'm willing to accept, so now you have to take a second. So if someone's seconded, then you go out and ask for a vote.
Okay, so Tim stated he's willing to accept the, uh, vice chair, and we need a second.
I second that, Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Marvell.
Okay, Dave's second. So all those in favor?
One at a time.
Aye. I'm sorry, yeah, Tom, do it individually, call, we call the roll individually.
Okay, so let's call the roll individually. Um, myself, I vote, uh, in the affirmative. Uh, let's see, Dave, second, Dave Marvell?
Yes, I vote for that.
And, uh, Dave Eckerson?
Yes.
Aye.
And it's Mr. Van Sant?
Mr. Voss, Nick, Nick Voss.
Nick Voss, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. No, Nick Voss votes in the affirmative, thank you, yes.
Okay, so then that's, that's, everybody's present then, it's unanimous then.
Well, you're missing, you're missing, I have to, I get to vote myself too, I think.
Oh, Tim, sorry.
Aye.
Okay, so then it's unanimous, I might have to get the hang of this. All right. Now we want to go to the next.
Yep, call nominations for a financial officer.
I was just gonna do that. Could we call for nominations for the financial officer at this time?
I'd like to, uh, nominate Mr. Dave Eckerson.
Okay, we have, uh, a nomination for Dave Eckerson for a financial officer, is there a second?
I second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Give that to Mr. Voss, please. No problem, Nick.
Thanks.
Okay, motions made and seconded, all those in favor?
By roll.
Oh, by roll, individual roll. Um, and I can vote, right?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna vote in the affirmative, Tom Berquen. Um, Tim Reins is in the affirmative, I believe.
Aye. Tim Reins says aye.
Tim Reins on aye. Dave Marvell?
Aye.
And the other guy, the other name I massacred there.
Nick Voss says aye.
Nick Voss, I'm sorry. Nick Voss. Nick, you're affirmative?
Yes, I am.
All right, so then we're unanimous?
Yeah, I can vote, also, right?
Yes, correct. Tom, let me ask you a question, you, you do have the, um, agenda in front of you, right?
I
Uh, I do not. I don't have it.
Okay, I'll, I'll, um, I'll go through, I'll go through it for you this evening, so, and then we'll just, um, go forward.
Okay.
Now, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as chair of, uh, last meeting and set the agenda on the new business, there was nothing. On their old business, there was the same category, there was nothing. Now, um, the financial reports, I did email to all the members, they should have them. And, um, I want everyone just to look those over. Uh, there's nothing that, um, would need to be voted on, Mr. Chairman, in regard to the financial report, well, I would say the acceptance of the report as given to the members would be a motion, so.
Okay.
I would suggest, Mr. Chair, give everyone about a minute to look over the financials if they have not already. And then, um, ask for a vote. To accept the financial report.
Very good, all right.
Are we open for questions?
Uh, yes.
I mean, did you think that you've already looked it over?
Um, right, I was looking it over a couple of minutes ago, so.
Okay, I'm sure we can.
Well, we can wait till everyone has a chance here.
Yeah, we could do that, yep.
Give him, uh, yeah, give Mr. Eckerson the opportunity to look it over, if you have some questions, and just the forum right now to ask them.
I know when I printed it out, it's pretty small though, actually.
Now, um, I, this is Tim Reins, I just wanted to speak on it briefly, um, I was the former chair again, as I say, last, um, last time around. And, um, the reports are gonna be reflecting in possibly October, November, with more monies that have been taken in by taxes. So the numbers that were voted on at town meeting were reflecting the categories, will be in addition in those categories, and, um, usually past practice has been, the town averages a hundred thousand dollars a year. There are three categories of ten percent each, and one category of five percent. And so if you do the mathematics, there's been ten thousand dollars in each category, five thousand dollars in the administrative budget, and then the rest of the, would give the sixty-five thousand dollars would go into the undesigned reserve. Now you're also talking about the percentage of return that the town receives from the CPC, so that will also be reflected in the future. Now, I'm gonna speak on something during public input, maybe the chairman's report, this will be up next, and, um, something we need to look at for, uh, for possible future, uh, you know, um, submission of an, uh, an application, that type of thing.
All right, so, is, um.
I'd say.
Yeah, can I go ahead now?
Have you all had enough time?
Yeah.
I'd say, go ahead.
All right, so I just, uh, wondering, um, the, the balance reserve for community housing, the 110876, that's been, um, that's basically assigned to the, uh, Lincoln Village project, right, so?
Correct.
So that will just disappear at some point during the year, is that how that works?
Yes, it should be, I talked to Mr. Caswell, who is the regional, um, director for housing in this area, and, um, I had notified him at the town meeting votes. And when they would be, um, asking for the town to send a check. So that'll be in the future, he'll be contacting the committee, or myself probably, in, in that regard, so. And that's usually what happens, but also the, I'll speak on this again in the chairman's report, I want to bring that up, is, um, another topic, so I don't want to take Mr. Eckerson's time away.
Yeah, so, um, and then we have the, uh, FY20 revenue year to date, so that is, uh, actual money that we have already received, not, uh, projection?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that was, that was what was voted on at town meetings, so you're gonna look at some columns, so you're gonna see encumbrances. And, um, those are monies that were voted on in prior town meetings that are still just sitting there waiting for, um, certain entities to get back. So I think that, um, there was the encumbrance for eighty-three thousand dollars, that was spent, I believe. And that was for the APR agricultural preservation restriction up on Elm Street, so that was done, I signed the paperwork on that. That's been taken care of. The twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the, no, that was, we didn't approve any monies for the playground, that was, yes, we did, I believe. That was twelve thousand five hundred dollars, uh, Mr. Eckerson, and that was for, uh, paving for the North Dayton basketball court. They're working right now with, in North Dayton, in that area, and doing some red work, and when the contractor comes in to pave, the highway superintendent has, um, noted by me that the contractor would also pave the basketball court.
Yep. All right, those are my questions.
Okay. Are there any other questions in regards to the financials?
Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, make a motion to accept the financial report as given.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded to accept the financials as given, all those in favor? And you want to do?
Tom, you just have to ask one more time, is there any more, um, hold on a second.
Any more additions or corrections?
Any, any more, um, conversation?
Oh, yeah, any more conversation on the financials? Seeing and hearing none, I guess we would move on to the vote then. To accept, except as read, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Or as given.
So we need a roll call individually?
Correct.
So I'll, I can vote, even though I'm the chair, I vote, right?
Correct.
So I'm gonna vote in the affirmative, uh, Tom Berquen, uh, Tim Reins?
Aye.
Tim Reins, aye. David Eckerson?
Aye.
Dave Marvell?
Aye.
And Mr. Voss?
Aye.
Did I just say it right?
Yes, you did, thank you, Bob, yeah.
My God, all right. Gotta get that straight. Okay, so it looks like everybody, it's unanimous, so we'll move on to the next thing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that would be the chairman's report. So, um, it's, I would like to, uh, address, I would like to address the membership, if I may please, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, because we're in this transitional setting here, so go right ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, um, expound upon a few things that have just recently happened, um, with town meeting with our vote, um, to accept the monies to be spent for the electoral plans of Lincoln Village, so that was a unanimous vote, of course, our budget's always passed in the, uh, ten, ten, and ten categories, and our five percent administrative fees. So that's always, uh, taken care of, and that's always unanimous vote, um, I'd like to talk about, um, I'm gonna step aside now. Because I'm the representative from the Playground Commission, and I just want to talk about, um, I think that the committee should really look long and hard at, at, um, looking at, um, doing a playground for North Dayton. There are other avenues of monies, um, that are out there. I have, um, spoken with the town administrator, and, uh, we're working on some things, and that would be some, uh, grants that are provided by companies. Uh, that type of thing. So, um, I'm gonna be looking at, uh, possibly in the future, presenting a, uh, an application from the Park and Rec Commission with their vote, of course, to, uh, go forward in the playground application. Now, with that being said, I want to talk about, excuse me, um, the agricultural preservation restriction, all that paperwork has been done, it's been signed. The, the check is, um, being sent as we speak. So that has been taken care of, and that was, um, some property that the Community Preservation Committee had the, uh, opportunity to, uh, to purchase up on Elm Streets, and it's, um, it's protecting a farm, and the farm will be, um, used in perpetuity, will never be, ever be built on, so that type of thing. So I think that was a positive, um, something that we've worked on. Um, Mr. Chairman, I can't think of anything else right now at this time, so, um, would that, um, your call, sir?
Well, uh, what's the next item, Tim, that comes up? I don't have it in front of me.
So I think that, uh, what you should do, Mr. Chairman, is, um, call for a vote to accept the report of the, um, former chair as given. So at this time, I'm going to, I am going to myself make a motion to accept, um, the report I just gave as given, I'm not sure if that's legal, I think someone else might have to do that, so I'm gonna step aside.
I'd like to, you know, make a, have someone entertain a motion to accept Tim's, uh, report, uh, Mr. Reins' report uh, in regards to when he was chair. And if there's any further discussion on that, I'd like to move to, uh.
Yeah, I'd like to make that.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'd like to second that, please, Dave Marvell.
All right, motion made and seconded. Although, is there any further discussion? I think we're all set. Is anything else anybody wanted to add? I, I'm, I don't know if this is the right time, I'd just like to thank, uh, Mr. Reins for all his work. Not if this is an appropriate time, but I mean, I've been with you for a couple of years now. And, uh, but I will do the best I can to move into this position, it's not easy to, shoes to fill, you know what I mean? But, uh, I just want to thank you for everything you've done.
Well, thanks, Tom, I appreciate that, I'm just, you know, I'm just giving back to my community, that's all I'm doing.
I know, I know that, I think that's what, we all want to do that, and, uh, we're all willing to learn, you can learn something new every day. All right, so, uh.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the February twentieth meeting of twenty twenty. And it's time, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February twentieth, twenty twenty meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, next one.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. And that's from the last meeting. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You still have to do a roll call?
Yeah, you should, probably, yes, yes. Especially in this forum.
I'm gonna, uh, vote in the affirmative, Tom Berquen, Tim Reins?
Aye.
Um, Dave Marvell?
Aye.
Dave Eckerson?
Aye.
And Mr. Voss?
Aye.
And that's everyone. So it would be unanimous. And we move on to the next.
So, Mr. Chairman, now, that we, public inputs, um, I'd like to say something, just on the public input, I, but this is, um, for the committee also, the, um, at the discussions with the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen, is my understanding that, um, our administrative assistant is due a raise, and, uh, we can vote on that this evening, and, and I'd like to, um, vote to approve for our administrative assistant a two percent increase in pay. And once we do that, we have to present that information to the BOS, they make the approval, the monies are in our budgets. We have separate from the town's budget, so that's not any reflection, so it can be done. So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'm going to make a motion to have our administrative assistants pay increased by two percent.
And that's with, uh, that's the contractual thing that we do anyhow, right?
Uh, yes, that would be the contract through the workers, the clerical workers in the town hall, and, uh, Mrs. Robitaille is not in the union, but she still falls under those parameters of receiving those monies.
Correct, all right. Motion's been made, um, in regards to the, uh, two percent uh, pay raise for the administrative assistant. And do I hear a second?
Second it, Dave Marvell.
Okay. All those in favor? Do you have to repeat it again, Tim, or can you just go that way?
Yes, you do, if you go, yes, you go.
Gotta repeat it again, okay.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded to, um, if the, to, uh, go ahead with the pay raise, the two percent pay raise, which is contract, falls under the contractual, even though she's not under the contract, um, pay raise. So, all those in favor?
By roll call, again.
By roll call, uh, myself, affirmative, Tom Berquen, Tim Reins?
Aye.
Dave Marvell?
Aye.
Dave Eckerson?
Aye.
And Miss, Mr. Voss?
Aye.
So that would be a unanimous vote? Uh, we didn't have to have any discussion, did we? Or did I forget that? We kind of discussed it, didn't we?
Yes.
So that, that would be unanimous then.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to, um, address the membership again information.
Absolutely.
Um, before the meeting began this evening, um, what we need to do is that there is a, basically, I want, I hate to call it a disclaimer, but, um, it's in relation to how you hold these type of meetings, where you have to have, um, a, just, it, it's written out that, um, there's certain, you know, things that should be said about why the meeting's being held, um, via Zoom, so, um, I do have a copy of it right now, but I'm not gonna read it. But it is, um, it's basically, it says, due to the increasing concerns surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held remotely, no physical meeting location, that type of thing, so what's, um, what I will do is that I will forward that information to our administrative assistant, so that way it's in our packet. So that way, if we do another Zoom meeting and don't meet in person, or it's just case where that sometimes it is better to meet via Zoom than to meet in person, that we'll have this information, that way it's out to the general public. So we, uh,
Oh, go ahead.
We don't, um, we don't, um, we, I'll discuss this at a, at a later time, the rest of that, uh, Mr. Chair, so I believe that, um, I've, I've said quite a bit for the evening, um, and I appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate you helping us out here, getting, getting going here. Um, the thing is, uh, I think that does have to be read at the beginning, if you do these things, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know.
Yes, yes, it does, and, um, I didn't read it, but, um, I don't think we'd be in trouble or remiss, it was just a case of, um, I didn't have that at the time with me, but I do now, so.
And I mean, we're kind of reorganizational.
Yeah, I'll present that to the board, so the committee has it for the next meeting, and I'll send it off to our administrative assistant, that information. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, the next, um, item on the agenda this evening is to adjourn.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else going on, I would say that we would try to make a motion to adjourn somebody.
But before we do, Mr. Chairman, just remind the membership of what night, uh, of the month that we meet. And this is a reminder, and I'll be in contact with you going further before our next meeting.
Right, so I can get all, everything in order, so I can, you know, get acquainted with everything. I mean, a little better than I.
Mr. Bork, and I promise, I, Mr. Bork, and I promise you, everything I, I know that I, which is really not a lot, I will try to, try to teach you.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate it, I know you, you know what you're doing here, but I mean.
I, um, before, before we wrap up, um, if, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to say a few things, that, um, I've had the honor and privilege of, um, serving as the chairman of this committee for, uh, many years. And through the years, I've worked with some fine people in order to do some great projects, um, in this town, you know, namely, the tennis courts. I could go on to the museum up on, uh, William Street, the Dayton Historical Society Building. And, um, I look forward to working with everyone, going further to, uh, get a playground done for those residents in North Dayton, they deserve it, they really do, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to say before we adjourn? I mean, just.
Um, Dave Marvell, yeah, I just want to say, it's been a pleasure working with Tim, I learned a lot from him, uh, he's a great chairman, he's very organized, very informative, and, uh, it's nice to be on a committee instead of, you know, being on a committee where you have to serve other people, so it's like, I enjoy it, I think it's a great committee, enjoy the people that are on it, and, uh, I think we're gonna have another great year. I enjoy it, I think it's a great committee, enjoy the people that are on it, and, uh, I think we're gonna have another great year, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marvell, I appreciate those time words, sir, I, I do, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I, I echo those two, uh, Tim, thanks, and, uh, but you're continuing on, so we'll enjoy working together as we go forward.
Mr. Eckerson, thank you for the time words also, and I, I certainly do, I think, I love the composition and the people that I work with, so I, I will continue to do as much as I can, so.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tim, I know I'm newer on the board, but it's really been a pleasure, and I appreciate everything.
Thanks, Nick, well, we're gonna still be together, so we're gonna get a lot done as a committee.
Very good.
Okay, well, let's, uh, call for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting at seven thirty-five PM.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, and you wanna do the roll call again, I would assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay, myself, Tom Berkwin, I vote in the affirmative to adjourn, Tim?
Aye.
Dave Marvell?
Aye.
Dave Eckerson?
Aye.
And Mr.?
Vaz, yes, aye.
Mr. Vaz, I'm sorry. I don't know why I did that, all right, and that, you, so we're all in favor, it's unanimous, so the meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to say, uh, thank you, Cable, for, um, doing this with us, Cable is gonna, uh, put this on YouTube at a later date, Mr. Chairman, so the membership will know, and the residents will also know, so, thank you, Cable.
All right, we're signing off as Cable, goodnight, everyone, take care.
Thank you.